I'd like to call the September 17, 2018, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. If we could start, Mrs. Thomas, with the call of the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman? Mr. Sims? Mrs. Partey?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Present.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Sims and Mr. Weisman?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call roll on the motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion passes. Will all those who are able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening, we will swear in Robert Perko III as University Heights Fire Chief and Dustin Rogers as University Heights Chief of Police. As the Mayor and Safety Director of the City of University Heights, I would like to take this opportunity to say a few words about them. These two individuals have been serving in these roles in an interim capacity, Bob Perko since January 2, 2018, and Dustin Rogers since March 17, 2018. In the matter of Bob Perko, I knew from the night of the election last year that I would be fulfilling a campaign promise to bring change to our fire department. To that end, I met first with the then-chief of the department, and then last December, I interviewed all three captains of the fire department in search of an interim chief. While all three captains were impressive and capable, I saw in Bob Perko an opportunity to elevate an exceptional and driven candidate who had accomplished much already in his time here with the city. I wanted to see how he would do in an interim capacity and afford him the time to grow professionally and as a leader before selecting a permanent fire chief for the department. In the matter of Dustin Rogers, I had known since before taking office of Chief Stephen Hammond's intention to retire in 2018. I did not fully appreciate how quickly his retirement would come until he announced publicly his retirement on January 24, 2018, and with that announcing that his last day would be March 16 of 2018. Having been in office for just a little over three weeks, I decided then to appoint an interim chief rather than try to undertake a complete process of selecting a permanent chief in just seven weeks. I interviewed everyone in the command structure, all lieutenants and all sergeants, irrespective of whether they had made an express interest in the position. I was enlightened to learn how much talent we have in our command. Ultimately, I selected Dustin Rogers as our interim chief of police. What that, while that meant he would be jumping a rank from sergeant to chief, I believed then, as I do now, that he possesses not only the base qualifications to be a chief, but that he has the right demeanor and temperament and experience for the position. It was at that time my intention to convene a hiring committee to find our permanent chief of police. I even approached some people to serve on that committee back in March. But as I turned my attention to other matters of emergent concern here at the city, I came to find in both of our interim chiefs incredible aptitude and leadership. As summer arrived, we scheduled a public safety forum for August 1. It is not new to have safety meetings for the community in the summer. We'd had one just the August before. But I also wanted to see both of our interim chiefs in front of our community expressing our administration's vision for the future of safety services in this city. The Office of Community Policing, the return of the Fire Prevention Bureau, and more. I asked them to each take 20 minutes, and they both took considerably more. And I didn't cut them off because I knew the community needed to hear everything they had to say. And me, as a resident and part of the community, I too needed to hear everything they had to say. And when they were both through, on the spot, I said at that meeting that these two individuals are not merely keeping the seats warm. Both of them are leading their departments and implementing the vision of what our fire department and police department should be here in the City of University Heights. Looking back on that night, I knew then, and I think I probably really knew even before then, that we had found our chiefs. I conferred with our city council, and I approached both Bob and Dustin to offer them the positions, and they have accepted. Since making the announcement public last Wednesday, we have received nothing but congratulatory and laudatory support for their promotions to the permanent positions coming from both within the city and throughout the greater community. These gentlemen have the experience, leadership skills, work ethic, and temperament to be successful leaders of their departments. Indeed, they have been since their initial appointments. I want to take this opportunity to thank both Bob Perko and Dustin Rogers for their willingness to undertake these great responsibilities in service to the City of University Heights. So without further ado, I would like to begin by swearing in Bob Perko.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Robert Perko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As Chief of Fire.
As Chief of Fire.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks for being here. Mayor, thank you for the kind words. I truly appreciate it. This is really amazing. On January 2, I shared with you how grateful I was to be appointed in the interim capacity. I proclaimed my commitment to address the needs and challenges of our department, and I did not take this privileged opportunity lightly. The last nine months have been some of the fastest months of my life. The administrative officers and the firefighters of this department have been in the high-speed lane all year. Their dedication and support to carry out the vision to rebuild and progress our department has been extraordinary. We have focused heavily on enhancing the technology of the department, filling staffing shortages, reopening and rebranding the Fire Prevention Bureau, increasing our community engagement, and analyzing our operational effectiveness. My support system has also doubled this year. I am forever indebted to everyone who has offered to assist me this year. I owe a huge thank you to the members of my department. We wouldn't be where we're at this year without their help. A big thanks to the surrounding fire departments and their chiefs as well, and also to Chief Rogers and his members. Most importantly, I must thank my friends and my family, as I cannot do this without them, especially Jessica. I'd also like to thank Mayor Brennan for this appointment and for council support as well. It's been a pleasure to protect and serve the residents of University Heights while working hand-in-hand with the city leadership. I grew up and spent a lot of my childhood around the firehouse that my father worked in, so it's something familiar and close to me and what I know. To have the opportunity to move up through the ranks and take on such an important role of leadership in a profession that I'm so passionate of is unexplainable. I am honored and humbled to lead a department as great as this one. I look forward to working with this administration. I value your confidence bestowed upon me, and I know that we are doing great things here in University Heights, and I'm happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and represent to me.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Dustin Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, my gosh. They are adorable.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody that's here today. I've had other meetings recently, Lieutenant Holden's retirement, but it really does mean a lot in law enforcement, in public safety in general, when, you know, this type of profession requires heavily on things like camaraderie and support. And when we have this, this type of response from, from people showing up here to support these appointments, it really does mean a lot. So I thank everybody that is here tonight. As mentioned during the, the appointment of my interim position in March, law enforcement, public safety in general, regardless of rank or assignment or appointment, to me, it truly is an honor and a privilege to be in this position in law enforcement. And I look forward to continuing to enhance the services of our agency, working with the community and the stakeholders to continue to enhance and strengthen our relationships while in pursuit of service excellence. And I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm looking very much forward to it. So thank you again, Mayor.
Counsel, thank you.
Very grateful for this opportunity.
Is there a motion for a brief recess so that we can celebrate?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Pam Cameron, second by Mr. Erdl. Mrs. Thomas, we call a roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
We're in recess.
All right.
I think, I don't know if we need a motion. Do we need a motion to go back into order?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilman Weisman, second by Councilwoman Weiss. If, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock? Aye.
Mr. Weisman? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes, and we are back in session. The, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mayor, could I suggest that we table until the next meeting since we just got them last night?
Okay, is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to table the minutes to allow time for further review. Motion is by Mrs. Wise, second by Mr. Erdl. Is there any discussion? If there's none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are tabled. Next, our comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. For a total time allowed for speakers of 15 minutes. Is there anyone from the public who'd care to address the city this evening? Okay, if there is none, then we will proceed to the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. I will keep this brief. For the mayor's report, there is a new save the date of Wednesday, November 14. That would be Wednesday, November 14, 2018, for the city's first Civic Awards Dinner since 2009. So no longer the 15th, it's now the 14th, because that's when John Carroll celebrates their Thanksgiving on campus, and that would have been too much all at once. So at that event, we will name our 2018 Citizen of the Year, Employee of the Year, Public Servant of the Year, among other recognitions. And we are now in the process of delivering a special edition of the newsletter, soliciting nominations and recommendations for civic recognition from the community. Residents with a Wednesday, Thursday, or Monday trash pickup have already received theirs, as have our online newsletter subscribers. Residents with a Tuesday trash pickup will get theirs tomorrow. We're also delighted that Maggie McPhee is going to emcee the event, and ticket information will be announced soon. At the last council meeting, I read a letter that I sent to landlords of a certain party house on Warrensville Center Road. They have since replied to the letter, and I will read it now. Dear Mayor Brennan, we received your letter of September 4, 2018, regarding the disturbance our renters caused on the 25th of August. As a student at John Carroll University, I rented a house on Warrensville, and I am well aware of the neighborhood rules and expectations. Those very rules helped us in making our decision to purchase this house as a rental. It is our desire that our rentals are good neighbors, and we have no intention of putting up with this kind of nonsense. We personally contacted their parents and coaches. They are aware that this is the last warning they will receive. Please be assured that we take this matter very seriously, and if our tenants do not moderate their behavior, we do not wish to have them as tenants. Very sincerely yours, those landlords. So I appreciate that, and I hope that we will not be seeing further disturbances from that house, and that that be an example to, to other rental homes here in the community. There are a number of dates for a number of events coming up in the next few weeks. I'm not going to try to run down all of them in too great detail, but upcoming, we have Coffee with the Cop on Wednesday, October 3, at 10:00 a.m. at Jack's Deli. The Legal Women Voters was here to let us know that there is a Candidates Night coming up on Thursday, October 4, 7:00 p.m., where candidates will present brief statements and answer questions from the audience. It looks like they'll be having Janine Boyd and Joe Miller, the House District 9 candidates, as well as Cheryl Stevens, who's running unopposed for County Council District 10. This Candidates Night will be at the Cleveland Heights Community Center on One Monticello Boulevard, and it is sponsored by the Cleveland Heights, University Heights, Cleveland Shaker Heights chapters of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. University Heights Fire Department Open House will be Sunday, October 7, from 11:30 to 2:30 p.m. On Tuesday, October 9, the mayor's Sustainability Committee will meet to discuss garbage collection. That will be at 6:30 on October 9. And at 7:30 that same evening, the Communications Committee will meet to discuss the trash Tribune, the Garbage Gazette, AKA At Your Service, and alternatives for distribution of our monthly newsletter. At the last meeting, I advised of my intention to allow the previously ordered delayed implementation of the rental registration fee program to sunset on September 14 to schedule, and then asked the council tonight to repeal, in part, the fee schedule in ordinance 2018-28. That repeal ordinance is on the agenda tonight. I want to repeat that the repeal is not the end of our reformation of the rental registration program. A new program is in the works, but in the meantime, presuming tonight's repeal, we will resume the collection of fees for rental permit applications and inspections. Finally, I want to announce that I am looking for a new Executive Assistant and Special Projects Coordinator. Lisa Marinick's last day was September 12, 2018. I want to thank Lisa for her service both to my administration and to the previous administration. I wish her good luck and much happiness. The job description for the position of Executive Assistant and Special Projects Coordinator is now on the website. I will be taking applications until the position is filled. Qualified applicants may submit their resume and cover letter to mayor@universityheights.com. And this concludes my report. So first up on the agenda, we have passed out a revised version of this, different from what was in the council packets. It's more or less the same, but I want to make sure that you refer to the updated version of 2018-53. And if you have that update, we would then proceed with, I want to make sure I put this in right order. Okay? Right. An ordinance restoring the fire chief to the civil service rank of captain and declaring an emergency. And in this revised version, you will see basically the differences from the, the one that was distributed in the council packets is, one, the ordinance has been reflected to, or has been corrected to more fully set forth the terms of the rank restoration agreement, but then, two, the rank restoration agreement was also moderated slightly. That being that in Section 3.1, termination for cause, which would not allow for a rank restoration for Chief Perko, cause would be limited to acts of dishonesty, fraud, or moral turpitude. We wanted to make very clear that, that any number of things that this administration or future administration could conceivably come up with as cause for termination be limited to these three areas, so that it would be the most significant acts of, significant bad acts, I should say, that would be cause to not allow a, a chief to be reinstated to the previous rank of captain. And that is, basically sums it up. Aluk, is there anything you'd like to add?
There's one other slight change, which was that we removed a couple of statutory references, which really were holdovers to the last, or the prior MOUs, that could be interpreted to require the correct certification for the fire chief or police chief, but in fact, really didn't say that. So they really were sort of superfluous and unenforceable provisions, and so we just took them out. We just took the statutory references out.
Okay, very good. Is there any discussion? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I, I, we, we have discussed this as a, as a council, not in a meeting. I just want to get on the record that the reason that we're entertaining these agreements is, is that if either of these gentlemen are no longer chiefs, they don't, they don't lose their spot as a ranked employee with the City of University Heights, so they're not sort of being forced to walk the plank, as it were. As, we're not passing anything now about their behavior specifically, we're sort of protecting them.
Correct.
I just want to be clear, sort of the, the exercise that we're entertaining.
Right, the, the overall basis of, of these rank restoration agreements, the, the reason behind them is, is, you know, both, both of these individuals have, have accepted these positions of leadership at a time when they have not even yet vested in their retirement plans. And if something, if, if something should change where, where it would be best that they not be a chief anymore, they shouldn't be out of a career as a result, and out of their retirement as a result. And that would be, that, that would just be unduly harsh.
Question. Yes.
So, so, so where's the incentive to, to do a good job so you don't lose your job? I mean, if you have a backup plan like that, I mean, where's your incentive?
Well, I mean, the thing is, is I think there would still be something demoralizing about, you know, losing the leadership position if you were simply not doing a good job. They could still be removed, it's just they wouldn't be fired from the department.
Right, I get it. In the, so, being removed would be for something bad, probably?
Most likely. Or, you know, they could be removed, if they serve at the pleasure of the Safety Director, I mean, they could be removed simply because the Safety Director wants to take the department in another direction. But, but the price of doing that shouldn't cost somebody's career and the ability to even be rehired. I mean, the thing is, is that there are age restrictions, where one may enter a, a new department as a firefighter or a police officer, and, and both these men are past those ages. So their employment opportunities in their chosen fields would be extremely limited if they were not afforded the opportunity to at least go back to the rank and file.
And I'm just thinking out loud, I'm just trying to work this through in my head. I, I hire and fire people all the time, and I'm always looking for the best way to manage them. So in this case, we'd have Zook back with us, right?
Well, Zook was a little different because he came in from the outside. He didn't come from within the department, and neither did Chief Hammond.
Right.
Yeah, but in this case, and, and talking with Kelly over the, the years, whenever a chief has risen from the ranks, it has been typical for us to pass a rank restoration ordinance to allow them to go back. The last person, I believe, to do that was Chief Bilcher.
Really?
Yes. Hitchler, excuse me.
So is this common in the fire and, and police?
It's common in cities like ours where the chief position isn't one that you test up to.
Right.
Right. And where the chief could be terminated by the, the mayor for practically any reason or no reason.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Right. So this is a way of protecting them and protecting their interests. And, and I believe it's, it's for the best for them and for the city in this instance.
Okay, all right, okay.
Are there any further questions? Further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion on the motion? Also, this, if you could amend this.
Is this on emergency?
Is this on emergency? I think it needs to be.
Move to approve an ordinance restoring the fire chief to the civil service rank of captain and declaring an emergency.
Yes, so this would be on emergency. And John, you still second?
I still second.
Very good, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? If there's none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call first the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Excuse me. Next is, we would be looking again at an amended, or not amended, rather, but revised version of 2018-54. This has been distributed as before you, and it has the This has been distributed as before you, and it has the same...it has the same general provisions and changes. There is one feature to this that I do feel compelled to point out. It was in the version that was distributed with the council packets, and it is this. Chief Rogers' last rank prior to becoming chief was sergeant. And we discussed the difficulty that would ensue if Chief Rogers were to leave the position of chief, and then his rank would be restored to sergeant, as opposed to a higher rank, such as lieutenant. Since Chief Rogers jumped a rank, it would be better overall for the department and for public service that he would go down potentially to the next rank down, which would be lieutenant, and not necessarily find himself being commanded by people above him at the lieutenant level that he had just previously been commanding as chief. Now, we cannot simply declare without a test or without an appropriate procedure, and I'm sure, I think Luke can probably state this a little more elegantly than I am at the moment, we cannot simply decree by ordinance that Chief Rogers would become a lieutenant were he to ever stop being chief. But what we can do is, we can agree now to restore him to the rank of sergeant, and we can also, and you'll notice the parenthetical, that he could also be restored to a higher rank as may be approved by the city's Civil Service Commission of the Division of Police. Now, under the rules for civil service, the Civil Service Commission may, when there is a matter of public interest, waive the rules. And perhaps Luke can state this a little more articulately, or more precisely, if you would do that.
That's basically correct. Our civil service rules govern promotion within the department, so there isn't a way for council to go around what is in those civil service rules. However, included in the rules is the ability of the Civil Service Commission, upon application, to waive rules in certain circumstances where the public interest is impacted. So it's the administration's intent to take this matter to the Civil Service Commission, explain to them what the situation is, and ask for them to allow for a bump back in the event that that would ever occur to the rank of lieutenant, without otherwise impacting anyone else in the civil service. So we would add an additional lieutenant position. We wouldn't be penalizing anyone else in the civil service who might be on a list for promotion, and we would take care of the issues that could arise with rank if there's a bump back to occur.
Yes. Thank you, Luke. So yes, that's basically the idea. So the step would be, two-step process here, really, would be for the council to pass this ordinance, and then for the Civil Service Commission to meet upon application, to consider that question of whether it's in the public interest to waive the rule and allow Chief Rogers to return to the rank of lieutenant as opposed to sergeant, should that ever arise. And it would be my suggestion that the Civil Service Commission meet, you know, sooner rather than later, so that we're not dealing with this question. It's at a much later date, but rather that we clear this up sometime in the next few weeks.
Oh. I'm surprised at that. We don't have to wait until we can ask them at any time that they meet to consider waiving that rule?
Well, I'm suggesting that the application be made so that they meet sooner to waive the rule, rather than, you know, do it five years down the road, or 10 years down the road, or some later date.
They're a public body, so as long as they're providing the public with the correct amount of notice, they can meet. That meeting will be public. Anyone can attend, and the matter will be put to them, and they will vote.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Other than that provision, this is basically the same, then, as the one the council just approved for Chief Perko. So if there are any questions or comments or anything, now would be the time. Is there any comment on the proposed ordinance? If there is none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wiseman, second by Mrs. Cameron. Any discussion?
Am I making this motion on emergency?
Yes, thank you. It should be on emergency.
So moved on emergency.
Seconded on emergency.
Very good. So the motion is amended to be on emergency with the same second, Mr. Wiseman and Mrs. Cameron.
Yes.
And is there any discussion now? There is none. If we could call the roll first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Yarne?
Aye.
Okay, and on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Yarne?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2018-55, authorizing the mayor to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, State Public Works Program, to fund Washington Boulevard from Wind Road to Cedar Road resurfacing project. Mr. Chuni, if you will take the floor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the annual application to our Public Works Commission, and last year, we applied for Washington, and it included the water line as well, water line and resurfacing. We got the water line funded through CWD, so we took that out of the application, and we are applying again, this time for the resurfacing from Cedar all the way to Wind. Last year, after falling just below the line of the cutoff for funding, the mayor and I went down to meet with Allison Ball. She gave us a few pointers on the application, and hopefully, it'll come through this time. So this ordinance is authorizing the mayor to apply again for the funding. We will know in December, and the money will not be available till the next state fiscal year, which is July 1st of 2019.
Just as a matter of a question, with the money not available till July 1st, do we have to wait to do the project after July 1st, or...
Yes. Yes. You can do the engineering one year ahead of time, but you cannot just entering into a construction contract until after you get an agreement from the state, which comes out on July 1st. You usually get it the 2nd or the 3rd of July. You have to sign the agreement, and then the money's available. We are...and one thing I forgot to say, we are...this is a joint project with the city of Cleveland Heights.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we could not bid it before July 1st, even though...
What we normally do if we get that, we could...you could bid it, and we would do it in like May, but you cannot award the contract until after July 1st. You cannot award a construction contract. We can accept bids, and then in the specs I would put that, yeah, they have to hold their prices until we award it, and it won't be until after July.
So then we conceivably could pave it in 2019?
Oh, I think we would, yeah. I think we would be ready to roll as soon as we had the money was available. You could start the job in August, and it could easily be done by October.
Okay. I would also note that there is...there are water line improvements that are also scheduled to be made prior to this, that we originally hoped would happen this year. But it is looking now that they will not happen before winter.
Correct.
We're looking to do that now in the spring.
They could start April 1st and be out of our way by June, yes.
Okay. So we'll be looking at Washington Boulevard being a little torn up between Cedar and Wind. And again, it looks pretty torn up right now. So in the end, it'll be greatly improved.
Correct.
And it's been long called for. Are there any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Cameron?
So do you need a motion approving the resolution, or are we going...what is it we need to do?
Okay.
Make a motion.
If so, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Resolution 2018-55, authorizing the mayor to seek financial assistance.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mr. Erdl. Is there any further discussion on this? Well, I'd just like to say, it is a portion of University Heights that the residents in that section of the city often feel as if we do not give them, or that they do not receive due attention. And sometimes I feel like they're right, but I'm hoping that we are able to secure from the county the funding for this project this time, and restore that part of Washington Boulevard to standard that it ought to be for any part of the city, especially the northeastern, or rather, northwestern quadrant of the city. If there's no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you take the role?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Yarne?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Thank you, council. Motion passes. So next is Item G, Ordinance 2018-56, an ordinance establishing an unclaimed monies fund. This is on emergency. Mr. Goff?
By...by high revised code, we should already have had a fund for unclaimed monies, monies that are in our possession that are owed to a third party, and that we just haven't been able to identify who it goes to back to, or they have made a request for the return of money. A perfect example of that is have a payment that we had just made for reimbursement to a citizen. They've since moved, so we do not have a forwarding address to send that to. So that's money that is owed to them. They can make a claim on it any time. That money could be placed in an unclaimed monies fund per high revised code, and then it would sit there and wait. The statutory period of time is five years, and then after five years, it reverts back to the general fund. So this is just a ordinance decree to that unclaimed monies fund.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Is there any questions, any discussion? Mrs. Cameron?
Yes. Mr. Goff, how does this sit with the unclaimed monies fund that is operated by the state?
This is very similar to that. It's one that's required for local governments, though, and the monies for our unclaimed monies fund do not get reported back to the state. They don't roll into the state unclaimed monies fund. But it works much the same way. Once something's put in there, there's five years for a claim to be put on. After five years, that money then reverts back to possession of the city and by being rolled over to our general fund.
Okay. And does this ordinance include a process of notification, or how does it include anything other than just holding the funds? Is there any part of the process that says that you, we as a city have to follow any type of procedures in order to locate and identify the folks who the funds belong to?
No, there is no procedure as such, similar to what you're requesting. My preference would be if there is unclaimed...if there is money that we owe to somebody, and we can actually get ahold of them, just get ahold of them and remit the money to them. The real purpose of the unclaimed monies fund would be that money that we are unable to contact the person. And so we would be in a position of, they would have to actually come to us, because we don't have current contact information for that person in order to reach out to them. They instead would have to reach out to us. So in terms of there being a process, no, other than...the example I had of this particular check was I reached out to the department that originated the refund request to see if they had more current contact information, and neither did...they did not have current information, I mean, or understandings of the...people probably moved on and did not leave forwarding information, did not use the postal service as a mail forwarding service. And so we know who it is, we just don't know how to get ahold of them. And that's the kind of situation that the unclaimed monies fund would really be used for.
Okay. Well, I would be more in favor of this if we had a specific set of criteria that we have to follow in order to state that this money is unclaimed. For instance, I would like to see that there be some responsibility on part of the city to either put it in a newspaper or advertise that in some way, so that people will know that they might have some money sitting around here.
While that is a good idea, it's not very practical, considering the particular check I'm sitting on is for $10. Though there is definitely, I know some other unclaimed monies in a couple of our trust funds, at least I'm presuming it's unclaimed monies, because it goes back several years as to being put into a trust fund. I would hope that we have documentation showing who it's owed to. That is some of the money that might eventually end up in here, and that is, I'm not going to put in there now until we've done our due diligence to determine who the rightful owner of that money is. But in terms of advertising, like you're suggesting, it's a good idea, but I would also say, for the dollar amount, at least for what we want to have currently, it's not pragmatic. In terms of having written procedures of how we're going to go about handling it, yes. In terms of overall procedures for the entire finance department, that is one of the items that needs to go in our future policies and procedures manual.
Okay. Well, I would say, as poor as I am right now, $10 sounds pretty good. So I would still like to see something in terms of, at least annually, some process where all of the funds that are yet to be claimed would at least be identified for a list that maybe collectively, it would be worth the value of advertising.
That'd be something very reasonable to look at, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may.
Certainly.
Yes. In my own personal experience, I'm aware of Geoga County, Geoga County Clerk of Courts posted a list both on their notice board in their courthouse, as well as put one online on their website. And somebody was kind enough to bring to my attention that my name was on that list, because there was a court cost refund that somehow they had lost my contact information for.
Right.
And I was able to contact the Geoga County Clerk of Courts, supply them my contact information, and get my 12 bucks, or whatever it was. Because somebody who knew me saw my name hanging up in the courthouse and said, "Oh, I know him, and I know where to find him."
Right.
So there may be ways that we can do it that don't require the cost that outweighs the amount that would actually be refunded.
Well, I'd be okay with a process that would include posting to the city website, for instance. Give us something more to put in a newsletter, perhaps, and say, "Hey..." Once a year, we could say, "Hey, if you've had some business with the city, maybe you forgot about X." I'd be okay with that.
Yes. I'm...yeah, I'm unaware of any impediment that would, you know, or any reason that we were, we would not be allowed to put a list of names of individuals or companies that say, "Unclaimed funds of the city. Contact the city if you are this person for more information."
Right.
That would certainly be a public record, and I would just add, as maybe a bit of further comfort, that this has become a little bit of a cottage industry, where there are firms that solicit public entities for lists of unclaimed funds, and then they go about attempting to contact the party and offering to retrieve the funds for a percentage of the recovery.
Right.
So it's not unusual for someone to find out through a firm like that that they have unclaimed funds.
But they're not obligated...people are not obligated to accept?
That's correct. But they often become aware, and if they're motivated enough, or sophisticated enough, or a combination of both, they can take the appropriate steps to retrieve the money.
Okay. Great.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff, as I understand it, we don't have a choice. The state says we have to have this fund.
Yes.
Okay. And can we...could you just establish the fund yourself, or it has to be by council?
Establishment of any...creation of any funds requires council approval.
Okay. And so where has this money been until now? Do we have any idea?
In terms of unclaimed monies fund, we haven't had one previously. There is substantial money, amount of money, in one of our trust accounts that, at the moment, I am of the thought that we might not have documentation to support who it's owed to, that goes back several years, oh, about a decade or so, as to when it was originally deposited into one particular trust fund. I was going a little bit off of memory there, so don't want to be really quoted on exactly the dollar amount, but it was in excess of $50,000. Why the amount was ever put in that fund? Why the amount was ever put in that fund, I'm not entirely sure of. And so, that's at least one of the items that, once we've gone through the rest of the records we have in finance, which will take some time, I have any illusion that we'll be through that anywhere in the next several months, that money would likely be put in this general fund. In terms of the particular item that's instigating the, "Yes, let's go ahead and create the fund," it's a special pickup for trash pickup reimbursement. They appear to have moved out of the address they left us, and we have no forwarding address for them.
Right. So, thank you. So, the $50,000 you're talking about, that is for how many recipients? Do you have any idea?
I have no, I have no idea what it's entirely for. I actually, since it's done as one transaction, I'm under the impression that it might have been a adjustment probably ordered by auditors years ago. If I remember it right, it is about $53,000, $54,000. It was either 2006 or 2008.
But this designated as unclaimed funds specifically?
No, it was put into one of our trust funds. And by being put into one of our trust funds implies that it's money that we are holding on behalf of a third party, and the question becomes, can we identify who that third party is? If we are unable to identify who the third party is, in my mind, it's unclaimed monies. Which case?
One deposit for?
It's one entry into the accounting system. What exactly makes it up at the moment, I have no idea.
And the entry was 2007 or 2008?
Uh, that time period, yes.
Mrs. Cameron?
Sir, since it's already been several years, what would the process be for us to be able to recover those funds?
The first step of the process is when we get to, in our finance department, being able to go through all of the miscellaneous records. There are several banker's boxes full of records that are pretty much completely unorganized that we're going to have to go through page by page, go through there, and if we're able to identify who that money belongs to, then we'd be in a position to try to track down who it is, try to remit it to them. If we are unable to, we would, the money would go into the unclaimed monies fund, and then after five years, revert back to the general fund. Whether or not that five-year time period has already lapsed, or whether we need to wait five years for it to go to the general fund would be something I would have to consult our law director on, and I'm pretty sure he'd probably need to do a little bit of research on it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wise?
Thank you. This doesn't really have to do with what we're talking about, but you said there's various banker's boxes of money. Are you implying that there could be?
Of records.
There could be bank accounts in the city's name that are not on our books?
When I say the term banker's boxes, that is a kind of generic term for boxes that are designed for, or intended for document storage. It's kind of just a default sort of term for that, so I'm not implying that there are...
You have file boxes that aren't filed?
They're file boxes, yes. I'm not implying that they're unknown bank accounts, but at the same time, if that were the case, it wouldn't be too terrible, too much of a terrible surprise to me, considering how disorganized finance has been historically.
Oh, my God.
But I'm not implying that I believe that actually is the case.
So, excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Cameron.
So, maybe we should have a finance party, and everybody take a box, and we can identify the contents of all these documents so that we can help the finance department.
The issue with that one is some of the records, I think, are going to take a trained eye to understand what the record is for, and so, it's not a task I want to delegate to the interns. It's a task that I want to do myself, or have, what I was going to include in my report later, our new deputy finance director, Rita Drew, who has background as a township fiscal officer, one of us going through those records, knowing what we're looking for as a fiscal officer, to see what they are, how pertinent they are. And it's a task that, at the moment, unfortunately, is a low priority, and when we get to it, will be time-consuming.
Jeez.
Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 2018-56 and establish an uncame, an unclaimed monies fund and declare an emergency.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Weisman, a second by Mrs. Cameron, I think it was?
Oh, Ms. Wise.
Oh, Ms. Wise, Mrs. Wise, thank you. Is there any further discussion, discussion on this motion?
Trying to get that.
If not, we will take two votes. First, on the suspension of the rules, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item H, is the ordinance 2018-57, repealing certain portions of ordinance 2018-28 that modified the city's rental registration program, temporarily reinstating the prior rental permit duration and fee schedule by amending subsections D and F of the codified ordinance, Section 12, 80.10 on emergency. And, excuse me, officially, this ordinance is being introduced by myself as mayor, basically reiterating what I said last week, or two weeks ago, and then touched on briefly during the mayor's report. I know the building committee has been working diligently, took a special meeting over the summer to address and listen to concerns and listen for ideas with respect to refinements we could make to our revised rental ordinance program. Basically, I want to make very clear that the repeal in part of the previous ordinance, and it's only in part because there were some very good things we did include in the previous ordinance that we want to keep, is not a retreat, but rather simply a pragmatic step taken so that our building department may resume collecting fees for rental inspections and for rental permit applications while we continue the work of revising our overall rental application program. Mr. Weisman, I don't know if there's anything you want to add with respect to the status of where we are with building committee?
Working through parameters for a new program, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of, a lot to unpack. We had a lot of concerns from different citizens, from the landlords, but we still have yet to hear from the citizenry in terms of, in terms of their thoughts about, about their rental program. I think the hope, at least for me, is that we have a meeting at some point in the future where citizens get to come tell us what they think about renters and how they're affecting the neighborhoods. But I look forward to unveiling in the future sort of what we're, what we're thinking in terms of, in terms of this program. It's no doubt that our, our rental registration fee system and the work that the city does to, to oversee the landlord community needs to go to the doctor. The question is just what, how we need to, how we need to administer that. I know the administration wants to hire a couple of, a couple of new inspectors. I think there are some other issues that we, that we have to go through, but we're moving.
Okay. Very good. Mr. McConville, is there anything you'd care to add with regard to the form that we've taken here with this repeal?
Just to, I think, piggyback on some of the things that folks have already said, that this is really just reinstating, if you will, the fee structure and the period of licensure that was in place prior to the enactment of 2018-28. And also, just to add, that we, we're in a position now where we're confident in saying that the current fee structure is not sufficient to support the operations of the program, and that there's a desire on the city's part to reach a fee structure that will recoup the city's administrative costs, and I know that Mr. Weisman's committee is working to that end.
Thank you. And thank you for adding the part about the, the, the recoupment aspect of the program. You know, again, and I know we have stated this on other occasions, we want to ensure that, you know, where we have a group of people, veneties, that are being regulated, that when that group has the ability to pay for their regulation, then it makes most sense that they pay for it instead of the populace as a whole, or taxpayers as a whole. So, very good. Are there any questions or comments, discussion about the proposed ordinance? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-57, 2018-57, repealing certain portions of ordinance 2018-28 that modified the city's rental registration program.
And declaring an emergency?
And declaring an emergency, yes. You read my mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Weisman, a second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, we'll take two votes. First, on the suspension of the rules, Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries, and since it's on emergency, as soon as it's prepared for signature, the building department will be able to resume collection of fees as we have discussed. So, we will take steps to return to a normal level with regard to fee collection and inspections and administration of the program. Okay, next on the agenda is item I, motion authorizing the seeking of bids for the 2018-3 tree pruning and removal contract. Mr. Corney, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to authorize us to go out to bid for the 2018-3 tree pruning and removal program. This program will be performed in what we have as Zone 3 of the city, the southwest portion, from Eaton Road to Warrensville Center, and from Hillbrook South to Fairmont. The list will include all those side streets. We're estimating that there'll be about 400 trees on the list and a cost of about $78,000, which will come from our tree improvement fund.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Are there any questions for Mr. Corney? Any comments? Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Earl, second by Mr. Rock. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just of the administration to be aware that, of the need for some kind of heightened awareness on behalf of the residents who are getting their trees trimmed. We have a lot of questions about these as the years go by. I know we did, six months ago, wasn't it? There was a, like, a specific meeting at night where the tree people were here and people could come ask questions, something like that. I don't know if that's specific to the planting as opposed to the pruning, but it just, if there was a way to alert the residents that this was going to go on, I think that would, I think that would help.
Yes, I'm interested in finding more and better ways of alerting the residents on this. My, my experience from our tree program was, with the programming we did, was most of the people who probably needed to see it didn't because until they had a tree trimmed, they took no interest in the subject matter. Then, once the tree was trimmed, it was, you know, horses out of the barn, you know? It's already happened, and mostly, they were coming and looking for a place to vent over what they viewed as a lack of notice as to what was happening. I, I think this may be something where Mr. Cook could help us engage in finding a better way of reaching out to the residents as we implement this program this time around to see if there's more that we can do to engage them as to what is happening so that they understand why what is happening is happening. Not so much because it's a matter of debate, but to help head off at the pass some of the questions that inevitably come in during or shortly after the fact.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions, comments? Is there a motion? Do we have a motion? We have a motion on the floor. Right, okay, a motion by Mr. Earl. Okay, if there's nothing further, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Okay, next, item J, is a motion to confirm mayor's appointment of Finance Director James Goff and Deputy Finance Director Rita Drew to the Regional Council of Governments for the Regional Income Tax Agency, also known as Rita. Mr. Goff?
As simple as the tax agency Rita, not to be confused with the new Deputy Finance Director, requires by their own rules that the appointment by the executive be confirmed by the legislative body. So, this is just confirming the mayor's appointment.
Yes. If you could explain what this appointment is, Mr. Goff?
This appointment is to be the city representative and the alternate city representative to the council of governments that operates and runs the Regional Income Tax Agency, also known as Rita.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Comments? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Burdick, second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next, on the agenda is a motion to hold an executive session immediately following the regular meeting for the purposes of discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. There are several real estate matters that we need to discuss in executive session, so I would ask at this time for a motion for an executive session at the conclusion of the meeting to discuss the real estate matters.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Is there a second?
Somebody got to.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Directors' reports, finance.
I've got several items for council. We've been, we've begun implementing the IT upgrades that were approved at the last council meeting. You'll have also possibly noticed that we now have better Wi-Fi access throughout City Hall, including the addition of a guest network that has internet access only and no access to the rest of the network, so that anybody from the outside who happens to be coming to a meeting can get on to the internet as they need to. The installation of the exchange server, the hardware for the, being able to host our email internally, that has been proceeding this week, and there will be a switchover, which there was an email out to everybody who has an existing city email account regarding that. So, that switchover will happen primarily over this weekend, but it takes several days and will result in an email outage while there's a backup of the existing emails, the actual conversion over. And so, beginning 9:00 a.m. on Friday, there will be no email sent or received from a city email account. We anticipate that being completed on Monday. We are saying on Monday that it's 8:00 p.m. Hopefully, it'll be sooner than that, but we are trying to avoid anybody anticipating the email being there earlier. Included in that, the first email that went out late on Friday was the timeline of all the events, as well as answers to several of the questions that we anticipated having about this process. There was another email that went out very early this morning regarding web access once the email is restored on next Monday, and that is through Outlook Web App, and it has an email link there as well as instructions about user names. There was originally intended to be an email sent out today from our IT consultant about the passwords. I just had a email with him here during the meeting that there was a little bit of confusion with that, so those individualized passwords will be going out tomorrow. Instead of from our IT consultant's web email address, will be coming from the intern email address here at the city. I will be sending out an email later tonight, letting everybody know that that will be happening. If anyone has not received any of those emails that has a city email account, they need to let me know immediately so we can look into that. I also distributed the IT consultant's information, contact information, his business cards to council during our break earlier. I would appreciate if council would reach out to him to make sure that anything in particular to your circumstances that were addressing the email, because, one, I don't want to see any issues pop up during this conversion that aren't necessary, and I especially do not want to see them happen with council members. But I do have an understanding from a few of you that most of you accessing with iPads that are city-owned, and you're using Google Apps for Word and Excel, so I might need to be contacting our IT consultant about that specifically to make sure that there are no issues we hadn't considered that might result from that, and if so, that we address As we've mentioned a few times earlier... As we've mentioned a few times earlier, we're adding Rita Drew, who was the consultant that was helping us with the bank reconciliations as our deputy finance director, so there will be three of us in finance, her, and then Denise Ballant, who is already working for the city. Her and Denise will both are contemplated as being part-time, 30 to 35 hours over the long term, though their hours, I expect, for the next several months will still be rather high just due to everything that's involved with where finance is right now. And that's probably going to be not just a month-long process, but very well, probably over a year for getting finance settled. We've definitely run into issues of just so much work that we're trying to do that we can't get some of the day-to-day tasks done, let alone being able to get long-term tasks that we need to get done, so I definitely need the additional help, and I appreciate the mayor's consent to hiring her. Regarding our accounting software, had a brief little mention of it earlier today earlier in the meeting. It's a 20-year-old setup at this point, was installed in 1999. The software itself dates back to the early 90s, and it's very clear that it is inadequate and we up for our needs. And we're looking at upgrading that and trying to do that rather speedily. Just came to through the process, and I'm amazed, I've been here about two and a half months at this point, I thought it's shorter than that. Came to conclusion in the last three weeks that that's something that we really truly need to change, and so it's kind of expedited timeline. Denise and myself, we were at a conference last week. On Thursday, we had an opportunity to be hands-on with the successor to our current platform, and that successor is VIP Fusion. That is most likely what we're going to end up recommending, but I'm going to be doing my due diligence while at the Government Finance Officers Association Conference later this week, looking at the other primary product that's available to municipal governments of Ohio, authority by Civica, as well as getting quotes for both setups, and so council should be prepared to see a recommendation regarding that, likely the first meeting in October and with the appropriate appropriations going along with that. It is very, definitely very much of a expedited timeline. This will also help us be able to process payroll in-house better than our other current options of in-house payroll, which is something we definitely want to bring back in-house with what we're currently paying to ADP. It doesn't save us any time, it actually takes us longer, and we're having substantial costs going out to ADP with our current outsourced payroll. We just closed the August, August 2018 in the accounting system, and we have a few items to wrap up before having reports to council. They looked a lot better than those interim reports. We had a lot of revenues from early in the year that hadn't been posted yet that we've identified, but there's still a substantial unreconciled balance, and that will probably remain so until when Rita gets back in here and can start working on the 2018 bank reconciliations and get caught up in identifying any other reconciling items that need to be addressed. But you can expect those reports to be available at the next council meeting. If there are any other questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
Sir, you mentioned that Ms. Rita Drew had just reconciled August of 2018?
No.
Seventeen?
No, that's she had previously, before she's actually identification right now, reconciled 2017.
That's what I thought.
The 2018 is really a matter of just taking what our system balance says it is versus our bank accounts and what we have been able to identify as outstanding checks to get a close approximation for a bank reconciliation.
Okay.
Though we are off by the neighborhood about $800,000. But it looks like it's $800,000 to the positive.
That's kind of expensive neighborhood, isn't it? $800,000 we're off?
That's potentially other unidentified outstanding checks, but most likely it's a combination of expenses that have been posted twice and revenues that have not been posted at all.
I'm not going to ask. Thank you very much. Sorry I asked.
Another question?
Yes, Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff said you've been here two and a half months.
I think it's been two and a half months. I've been here since middle, beginning of July.
It must seem like it's been two and a half years to you.
Yeah.
Some days this feels like years, some days it feels like minutes.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I really appreciate the thoroughness with which you are approaching your job and the soberness you are using to give us your assessments every week. I really appreciate it. Nothing is more important, I think, to this council than to understand some of the temperature of the city and exactly what's going on, and after five years of, yeah, everything's fine, I think it's great to be getting a really in-depth report from the finance director, and I just really appreciate your efforts. I can tell you're putting a lot of yourself into this work, and I think the city's better for it, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing me on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. I mean, I view my job as being able to rely on the rest of the city, go out and do what the city government's supposed to do, provide police force, fire service, EMS, take care of the streets. And at the same time, unless council's got a good understanding of where the financial situation is, I don't think you can make the decisions you need to make.
Agreed.
That's right.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Anything further for Mr. Goff? Very good. Director of Law, report.
Counsel, I want to make you and the public aware that the Board of Zoning Appeals will be conducting a special meeting next Wednesday morning, the 26th, at 8:00. There is one item on the agenda that's a normal piece of business that the BZA will be considering, but the main purpose of the special meeting is to conduct a training for members of the board. We're going to essentially give them a refresher on both the legal standards that are applicable to the various kinds of various variants and permit requests that we receive, and also go over some procedural matters that hopefully will give the board a little more confidence in terms of how they go about making their rulings.
Can we come?
And that's open to the public.
Yay.
I also want to report to you on the latest development regarding small cell regulations. As you know, the litigation that the city was engaged in with the small cell telecommunications industry was basically resolved by the state legislature's passage of House Bill 478, which was a compromise bill that was heavily negotiated between representatives for the various cities around the state that had sued on the one hand and the telecommunications industry on the other hand. And our ordinance regulating small cell infrastructure and installations was drafted in order to comply with the new state law. However, what's now happened is the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, is considering federal regulations that if enacted would in all likelihood preempt various portions of our state law and cause the city to have to go back and review our legislation to see where it was and was not compliant with potentially new federal law. So municipalities around the state of Ohio have been urged by the Ohio Municipal League to provide correspondence to the FCC. The FCC is in its comment period where it receives comments from the general public. The City of University Heights will be sending a letter to the FCC in the comment period, both to describe the process by which House Bill 478 was enacted and also you know, the unique circumstances that gave rise to that process, specifically the litigation that we were involved in. So we will be keeping an eye on that, and our counsel in that litigation, Walter Haverfield, is presently going through the proposed regulations, which are about 99 pages, and are going to provide us with a synopsis of what changes we might see if the FCC adopts the proposed regulations. So I may be reporting back to you on that, depending on what the FCC decides.
Thank you, Mr. McConville, for updating us on this most unfortunate development on small cell. Are there any questions here, Mr. McConville? Moving along then, public safety. Start with police. Chief Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'd like to report on two items tonight. First item is pertaining to new parking signage. It's been posted last week. The first location to acknowledge is on Washington Boulevard, just southeast of Warrensville here. We did add some new signage that restricts parking from the intersection of Warrensville. It's restricted. It has been in the past. Past the first drive, which would be on the south side of the street, but we moved that restricted area further back southeast, approximately three additional spaces, adding signage to prevent cars from parking there and hopefully to eliminate and accommodate traffic flow and prevent bottlenecking for Warren's, I'm sorry, Washington traffic approaching Warrensville. The other location where additional signage has been posted last week is on Fenway, just north of the access drive to Swenson's. We added some new signs there that restricts parking up to the driveway, and that will allow and accommodate ingress and egress out of the Swenson's access drive for vehicles. One other item to report on is the hiring process. It is ongoing, and with tonight's appointment, we'll be hiring four additional officers to fulfill the current staffing level of 30 that we have. So that completes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Rogers? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, the four new officers, tests are done. Offers are going out, and are they going to start?
We are currently in the background check phase. So once that's completed, then the next steps, we'll start with things like polygraph testing, other types of testing.
But within 60 days, something like that?
It's very possible, yeah. A lot of it depends on the completion of the background check for each candidate. That part has to be very thorough and vetted, obviously, and once we have a clear picture on the type of person we're dealing with, then then we can really start the process of the additional steps.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Any further questions for Chief Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Next, Chief Perko for the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this month, September is National Preparedness Month. If you check out FEMA's website, there's all kinds of information on there. They've had a weekly theme for the month of September. The theme for this week is to check your coverage as regards to your flood and/or sewer backup policies or lack thereof, so they're encouraging people to check in with their homeowner's insurance to see what the coverage is. Coincidentally, last week was life-saving skills in regards to like CPR training and AED training, so I wanted to mention that we have one more CPR class scheduled for this year. It's November 29th at 5:30 at the UH Library. In conjunction with FEMA and Preparedness Month, there was a national test of the emergency alert system, going to go out on your phones. That was scheduled for September 20th and has been moved to October 30th. FEMA also encourages you to use the app provided for your phone, and you can check out more information and alerts through the FEMA app. Ladder Truck Committee for the new ladder truck met today to review going over some of the final things we looked at with the last demo. We have decided on what manufacturer would be most appropriate for the department, and we're looking forward to meeting with the Safety Committee to share those recommendations with them. Hydrant flushing is going to be coming up around the corner, probably sometime near the end of this month, early October. And we'll get that information out as soon as we have it available. And also just to reiterate, the open house on October 7th, starting at 11:30.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. I'm sorry, were there any questions for Chief Perko? Saying none. Thank you, Chief Perko. Next is service. Mr. Corney?
Thank you, Mayor. Every time I come up here, I seem to talk about trees, and that will happen again now. Hopefully on Friday, the 28th of this month, which is not this Friday, but the following Friday, we will be opening bids for the tree removal, which we had received authorization from council at the last meeting. That's for tree removals on Graymount, Washington, that area of the old Silver Maples. So that'll be coming back to council's next meeting. Also that same day, we will be opening up tree bids for the planting of new trees. Hopefully, we'll get those trees in during the month of October and November. So I'll be coming back to you at the very next meeting for those authorizations. This week, we'll be working on moving quite a bit of equipment around in the City Hall parking lot and our parking area back in service as we prepare for the repaving of the City Hall asphalt areas. That should take, that'll be ground this week, then we'll be doing concrete work during the week and be repaved the following weekend at the end of the month. Summer fill salt was delivered this week, so we now have an additional 1,500 tons for a total of about 2,500 tons stored in Cleveland Heights, so we're prepared for our winter season.
Great.
That's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Are there any questions for Mr. Corney?
Yes. Yes, I believe we had a lady at one of the committee meetings. I can't recall which one or what her name was, but she had a complaint about a tree on Washington that was just east Warrensville Center Road, and I believe she said her house was next to the apartment building, and she had an issue with the tree that was in the apartment building.
Tree lot tree?
Yes.
Going towards her property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you tell us anything about how?
City administration has met with her.
Okay.
We have not agreed to remove the tree. So we have currently, the tree is still there and growing. It's healthy.
Oh. Okay.
I think at that meeting, we agreed to remove the roots if she needed to replace the sidewalk and/or the driveway.
Oh. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corney. Are there any further questions? Very good. Thank you, sir. Next is building, Mr. McReynolds.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor. A reminder that the groundbreaking for the new building over at the Belfair Community will be Friday morning, September 28th, 9 o'clock. The Bibby Bop Construction Project on Cedar Road is looking for a possible October opening. That's located at 139 Cedar. They haven't put up any signs yet, but they're waiting till they get everything situated. We did get an application from Verizon to change their logo on their sign. That was approved. And also Sherwin-Williams, and their new logo is up. We have been interviewing clerks, applicants, I should say, for the clerk position this past week. We'll be interviewing this week as well, and we hope to have a candidate selected by the end of this month. This week, we will begin interviewing inspector candidates. As was mentioned earlier, the Board of Zoning Appeals will have a special meeting this coming up Wednesday, the 26th, at 8:00 a.m., and then two weeks after that will be the regular meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as was mentioned, the parking lot in front of the Building Department will be repaved starting this weekend and then completed the weekend after. Any questions?
Any questions? No? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Next is communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook?
Good evening. Mayor touched on a couple items that I'm going to mention. We are going to redo how we do the distribution of the entry service newsletter. The current method isn't working, so we're tinkering with that, and I think we're going to continue to distribute it the old way for the October issue and hopefully have a new method by the November issue. Also mentioned, the civic awards. Maggie Mcfee, Vice Mayor, might remember her, at the complication at the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District. She does a fabulous job, and I think it will add a lot of flair and excitement to the civic awards, and I'm already working with her on some promos for the event, and also I think she's going to help us sell tickets. She has, you know, a following at the school, so I think, you know, my goal is to have this event. this event sell out, and I think she's going to be an important part of helping us sell tickets, but also making it an event worthy of the city. By the next city council meeting, I hope to have for all of you a lot of details about the city magazine that we want to do. We're going to model it and actually use Cleveland Jewish News to do it with us. We're going to model it on what they do over in Lynnhurst and Southview. The only difference is that our magazine will be better. And, is that it? Also, I'm working with the Police Department, they have a lot of great ideas about community police, and they have like lists of 12 things they want to do. We're going to kind of narrow it down a little bit, but we're looking at, let's see, the Hidden In plain sight program, which is where they kind of like stage, like a teenager's room, and you kind of try to figure out, you know, signs of drug abuse. In my past job, I was familiar with that program. So those are some things that we're looking to bring here. And again, you know, once we work out the details, which ones we're going to go with, which ones we'll put on the back burner, I'll report back to all of you. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Cook? All right. Oh, Mr. Rock, please.
I noticed on the website, it had a Facebook feed, and it already had today's celebration on it, so it's a live feed, it looks like.
Right.
You're up to speed, you're working quickly.
Well, to be clear, yeah, I wasn't checking the football scores or baseball scores, I didn't care, I was working, thank you.
I was very surprised to see that, thanks.
Yes, we all noticed it up here. I noticed Councilman Rock liked it while we were up here. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Economic Development, Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor. The Business Directory has now been updated, and we will be posting, I'll be working with Mike actually tomorrow, to post the updated version, so we have it online. And then prior to printing a new hard version, I will be meeting with the mayor to see any layout changes he would like to make or additions to the directory, and then we'll go ahead and print that out, so we have hard copies to distribute as well to all of our residents. Based off that directory, then, the introductory letters to all the businesses, they've already been mailed out. And I do want to thank Brendan Zach, who is one of the interns, because he was very helpful with all the stuffing and labeling the envelopes for me. So we did get those mailed out. Part of that letter, there's a link, and it'll take the businesses to a survey, and then that's going to provide me with information that I'm going to be, that will help me be of better service to the businesses. And we're going to utilize that information for business visitation, our business visitation program, any business updates and notifications, if funding opportunities for small business comes along, then these are ways we can reach these businesses immediately with this type of information and get that out to them, so they're aware of what's going on and what opportunities are out there. The link will also allow the businesses to sign up for our newsletter, so that they also are engaged with the city newsletter and be receiving that on a regular basis if that's what they're, if they're interested. I'm also working with the Chamber of Commerce and Heights Library on our Small Business Saturday event. That is a national event, it takes place the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So you have Black Friday for the big box retail, you have Cyber Monday for the e-commerce. So Small Business Saturday is a way that, it's a program that encourages holiday shoppers to patronize the brick and mortar small businesses that are local. And since the city has not actively participated in this program in the past, the goal this year is to just bring awareness to our businesses and try to get many businesses engaged to, in hopes of growing the participation each and every year. So the library's going to serve as a host during that, because there's, what's that football game? Oh, Ohio State and Michigan, I should know that. So just, so they'll be showing the game and having refreshments, so if people are out shopping around, they could also stop in the library. So they're going to be, we're going to be working collaboratively with them to be a part of this event. And then I'm also working with Mike to get the word out, and also just on some ideas of what we can do this first year just to get the businesses engaged. Some of our businesses apparently have participated, but it's all been done on their own as individual businesses, rather than this collaborative effort to bring greater awareness and bring people to our city to do shopping. And then I also had a kickoff meeting with representatives from the City of Cleveland Heights, and this is for a Taylor Road corridor study. And this is to help identify ways to make Taylor Road more desirable for walking, biking, and taking transit. So there's two topics they're going to look to study. One part is a parking analysis, so what is our parking supply in the Cedar-Taylor Business District? And then the other one, what improvements can be made to that area for walking and biking so that there's more traffic around our businesses over there. And that's my summary of this one.
That's wonderful, thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Ms. Drucker, is, any questions for Ms. Drucker?
I have a comment.
Oh, please. Mrs. Cameron.
This is just phenomenal. You've been here two weeks?
I think three weeks now.
This is the beginning?
This is my fourth week.
This is amazing. And so kudos to you for your interest in the city and reaching out and touching some of these areas that we have long hoped for a renaissance. So I do appreciate all the effort that you've put into this and how energetic you all are. And I also have to say, Mayor, it's a feather in your cap that almost every person that you've hired have uplifted this city.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Cameron, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
It's all in service to our community.
Oh my God, this is amazing.
Thank you. Anything, thank you, thank you, Ms. Drucker. That leaves Community Development. Mr. Grogan Myers could not be here this evening, but he did email me a director's report to share with you. Work will begin on Cedar Green pedestrian improvements during the first week of October, and work is expected to be completed the first week of November. Look out for changes in traffic as work begins. Work on the pedestrian improvement curb bumpouts on the Cedar-Taylor Business District will begin this weekend. The project is expected to move quickly. Susan Drucker and I, that is Patrick, will be notifying the district's businesses that work will begin. A public hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, September 27th, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers for the next round of Community Development Block Grant and Community Development Supplemental Grant funding. We look forward to hearing your thoughts and ideas for the city's applications. If you cannot make it, email your thoughts to the Community Development Office at development@universityheights.com. Just don't do it on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday.
Right.
Because you won't get them. That meeting again will be Thursday, September 27th at 6:00 p.m. And then finally, 3950 Sillsby Road, also known as the Corner House, also known as the White House, has transferred to the County Land Bank. The Land Bank will begin evaluating the home for demolition. Once Patrick hears more about a timeline for when the house will be demolished, he will share that information.
Oh.
Thank you. And that concludes Mr. Grogan Myers' report. Mr. Chuni, do you have anything to report on as city engineer?
No report, Mayor.
No report?
Understood.
Oh, oh. Mr. Chuni. All right, Council Standing Committees, Building, Chairman Mark Weisman.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, Civic Engagement, Chairman Pamela Cameron.
Looks like Ms. Drucker has sort of preempted some of the things that I planned to meet about, but that's okay, I can sit back and let her do whatever she chooses in that Cedar-Taylor corridor right now. I'm okay.
I'm sure there's still opportunities for corroboration.
Well, I don't know. We shall see.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Cameron. Finance, Chairwoman Susan Partey.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be having another Finance Committee meeting. It is not scheduled yet, I'll be talking with the Finance Director. We'll set it up and poll everyone to find out when a good time is. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Governmental Affairs, Chairwoman Michelle Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a productive meeting today at 6:00 o'clock, and we hope to have the CIC ordinance on the next agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Chairman Philip Erdl.
No report, Mayor.
No report, thank you, Councilman Erdl. Safety, Chairman John Rock.
Yes, Mayor. We're trying to schedule a meeting, and I know there was a poll that went out two weeks ago for, with some dates, so please check your polling. I know some people haven't filled it out, but I think as of now, there was not a consensus on the people who did poll, so we're going to have to look at some new dates so we can get consensus on that from our committee members, and we'll go from there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and Utilities, Chairman Stephen Sims. Mr. Sims is not here today, does anybody have a report from that committee? Seeing none, there will be no report. And then finally, Committee of the Whole, Mrs. Partey, anything to report?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, very good. We have now reached the conclusion of the meeting, but for the portion for executive session...